From the public during discussion of any of the agenda items, you're required to step up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record and a limit to time used to present your remarks to three minutes or less so others may be heard. All speakers shall speak clearly and direct their comments to the mayor and city council, not to any councilor specifically, and it's my discretion and the councils to respond to specific questions and comments or to have staff respond. Now that we're called to order, would those able please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Isom?
Here.
Lemur?
Let me get set down first.
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Werns absent.
Cahill?
Here.
Gotti is absent.
Hoop?
Here.
Very good. We have a quorum. Onto the next item, which is mayor, council, and administrative comments. Any comments by any councilors? Under the administrator comments category, we have an award, I'm told.
Yes, Public Works Director and City Engineer Justin Nickel is going to come up and tell us about the Asphalt Paving Association of Iowa Smoothness Award for Highway 14 that was presented to us and to the different contractors on the project.
Correct. Yes. Last Thursday, I attended the Asphalt Paving Association's annual meeting and luncheon, and we were the recipient of a smoothness award for, I want to say, it was between zero and $5 million was the category. We were joined by H.R. Green, the design engineer, Inroads Asphalt Paving, the contractor, and the Iowa DOT. As I said, I would be brief. It was a nice reward to receive.
Yes.
Award to receive.
Great. I shouldn't have even turned that over.
Said I would be brief.
Thank you. Well, so now we know we have nice, clean streets and the best water in the state. That's good. Any comments from the administrator?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. Well, I don't have much to say tonight either, although in keeping with the practice of feeding people who are worthy of adulation, I'd like to talk about JP and Jennifer Howard. Jennifer has served on the city council. JP has run for office. The two of them took an old building and they rehabbed it into a gorgeous place that's the best place to eat in town, sorry to all you other restaurateurs, and they have a nice bed and breakfast going, and they've done things like put together music festivals and things of that nature. And then my favorite story about Jennifer also involves my wife when they did the paint the bridge thing and the viaduct needed to be scraped and painted. They got nearly 1,000 people out there to scrape it. It only took about 15, 20 minutes because there were so many people out there, and it was 95 degrees. My favorite visual memory of that was Pat Apgar, who had his safari outfit on and was all decked out for that. It was just one of those cool things that happened years ago, and so thank you to the Howards for being good community citizens. That's all I've got for that. Now we're on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve it?
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you. A roll call.
Lemur?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you speed read the items?
Approve the minutes of November 25, bill list of $1,571,518.11. Approve renewal tree trimmer license for Marshall County Tree Service expiring April 19. Resolution approving contract change order number three for the 2017 manhole and point repair project, decrease of $15,275. Resolution approving contract change order number four for the High Street Drainage Improvements Project, decrease of $28,333.50. Resolution approving engineer statement of completion and accepting the High Street Drainage Project with final project costing amount of $1,754,817.30. Resolution authorizing the purchase of a 2011 K's International Puma mowing tractor for the street department, $75,250. Resolution authorizing the purchase of Meyer Bushel manure spreader for the compost facility for the price of $27,000.
Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes.
If we buy them a new manure spreader, I have a place that they could come use it if they want to.
Yeah, we could use that in my profession as well. Thank you. Onto resolutions then. That's item G. Would you read the first one, please?
Resolution to approve the facade grant application for 128 East Main Street.
Move for approval, Your Honor?
Second. Thank you. Discussion?
Diana Steiner, Finance Director, Duda's Restaurant at 128 East Main Street, has requested some facade grant funding. Their total is for a window and door installation of $5,778, signage of $1,800, total expense $75,78, which we would reimburse them 25 percent, so that'd be $1,895.
Thank you. Any questions, Diana? Consular comment? Public comment? Roll call.
Martin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lemur?
Yes.
Thank you. Onto the second resolution, please.
Resolution approving a temporary lease of 109 South First Avenue to the Marshall County Sheriff's Office for vehicle storage.
Move to approve.
Second, Your Honor.
Any discussion?
Just to let you know, this was a very quick thing that the sheriff's office approached us about due to some damage to their facility. They need to store the incident command vehicle temporarily until their overhead door could be fixed out at their location. We have talked that this would not interfere with our process to sell and that their insurance company will reimburse us $100 a month to be billed at the end of the lease.
Any questions or discussion? Public comment? Roll call.
Cahill?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lemur?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Very good. That carried as well. Onto the third resolution, please.
Resolution approving the use of capital project local option sales tax for appraisal services for properties adjacent to Edgewood Street.
Move for approval, Your Honor?
Thank you. Second. Discussion?
This came up by two council members at our last meeting that if there was some serious consideration to be given to making some offers to purchase properties along Edgewood Street, we'd need to start with an appraisal. I did a request for quote, and Raleigh Appraisal came back with the lowest cost of $2,000 for all appraisals, which I could normally approve with my authority. However, I'm recommending that we use the local option sales tax capital project, which has been pledged for the roadway project, and then just reallocate towards road use tax fund as things start to shift around in terms of total project costs. So it's the funding source that requires the approval from you tonight.
I don't perceive that as being controversial among anybody up here or anybody out there. If I'm wrong, stand up or shout. Roll call.
Cahill?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lemur?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thank you. That carried as well. Next item.
Resolution approving an agreement with Bolton and Mink for the final design and construction services for West End Park.
And retain a motion.
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Since there's construction services, shouldn't we just do the design first and make sure that we got the money to pay for it before we do construction services?
As of our last council meeting, we have officially borrowed the money to pay for it, so we have everything that we have on hand, which is why this is before you tonight and not in previous weeks.
Okay. Other questions or discussion?
Are we gonna, are we gonna have time to talk about the designs and stuff as it comes along, or?
So what this is putting together is, I'll pull it up here, this is moving forward with the concept plan here, ultimately with Phase One being what's highlighted here in yellow. And so we're talking about the natural playscape, the sidewalks. The West End, the park would have a new shelter that 13th Street is doing the fundraising for currently, and then I think this also, Phase One also includes a rain garden as well to kind of help deal with some of the stormwater issues as well. So the concept is what's before you in the packet tonight and what has been discussed previously.
So you're saying finally, you're saying finally, design of Stage One?
Yes, of the plans and specifications for Stage One. That's all we're moving forward with at this point in time. Yep.
Does Stage One have all the stormwater problems?
It will be seeking to address them. There's probably some things that we can do in the short term as well. We're also hoping to have some communication with Salvation Army about what their intentions are for their parking lot so that we can hopefully do some things to stop the water up there rather than trying to do it. But the rain garden will have some control over the stormwater runoff and seek to prevent the washout that's happening right there by the large culvert.
Okay, because I've been here long enough, I've seen that whole bottom underwater.
Mm-hmm.
And so we need to control the west, what's coming from the west down the creek, too.
Mm-hmm.
But they'll do all that?
I mean, this is, this is not seeking to address stormwater issues farther upstream, it's just seeking to control property erosion or land erosion that's happening in this current area due to stormwater.
Okay.
Other questions or the councilors? Public comment?
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. So I know we do things in phases, and sometimes we get ahead of ourselves. Phase Two includes two lots which we don't own. So we've made public disclosure of this, and I brought this up in a previous meeting. We've got these properties which we have to acquire, so how are we gonna address that? Because I guess we're not gonna have any closed meetings when we do that, since it's now open to the public to know that these two properties are being acquired by the city. So we're gonna spend $425,000 for this green space, and then we're gonna get held up, held hostage to acquire properties. That's interesting.
Other comment?
Neil DeWolfe, 1504 Brentwood Terrace. I'm the board president for 13th Street District. Just wanted to express gratitude and just excitement for the support that we've seen for this project through the community, through our events, social media posts, and your support from city council. It's been great working with the city of Marsh Town to improve the park from where it's been through the tornado and be able to add improvements, not only to the park, but also to the community. So we did say we're gonna take on the fundraising for the multipurpose shelter, and I'd like to update that we have secured full funding for that shelter of $74,750. So I think a press release will come out later this week, but just wanted to show our support for this project, not only from a community standpoint, but also the support we've had with the city and working with Jeff Hubbard and Bolton and Mink. Thank you.
Thanks, Neil. Nice story and picture in the paper recently about the 13th Street.
Nice job.
Other comment? Let's vote.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lemur?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Thank you. That carried as well. Next item, number five, resolution.
Resolution approving bond purchase agreement for sewer revenue refunding bonds and authorizing redemption of outstanding sewer revenue bonds.
Move for approval, Your Honor?
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Larry Berger from Spear Financial, and we are here to give you a lot of good news. And today, we did negotiate a rate for the city on a refunding for two of your outstanding bond issues, the 2012, 2014 bond. As you can see from our cover letter, when we negotiate with the bank, we actually have to use a placement agent, so we did use Piper Jaffrey. They were the ones that actually had the outstanding bonds, and so this is a bank placement. What that does is that eliminates a lot of things for you to pay for, meaning a rating and also a reserve fund. So what we're doing is we're placing and recommending that we award to J.P. Morgan Chase of Chicago, and this is a refunding. This is a current refunding of your outstanding sewer revenue bonds, and as you can see from the cover, we are just five, less than $5 short from a savings of $140,000, gross savings, and then $126,393 in net present value. If you just turn the pages, I'll quickly run through how we come up with these numbers. The lenders are on the second page. Now, Piper Jaffrey is not required, and the lenders, if they want to stay anonymous, that's their right. You can see Chase came in at the 196, the 1.96 percent. Now, the only difference with Chase was they require a 120 coverage. What that is, is the revenues that come into the sewer system minus the expense of running the sewer system has to equal 1.2 times, so the money left to pay the bonds has to be 1.2 times. That was not a concern of ours because right now you are at 2.17 coverage, so you have got plenty of coverage there going forward, so we thought the 1.96 percent was worth that to go to the 120 coverage. If you turn to the next page, I gave you the 2012 remaining bonds to be paid. The next page is the 2014. These are the ones that are outstanding. And then your new retirement schedule, as you can see, we didn't extend the bonds, we just replaced the interest rates with now a 196. And then the final page is the calculation for the savings, and this is net to the city because there are expenses in doing this, and so the $139,000 is net to the city, that's the gross savings. $126,000 is net present value, and what that is, is the aging of money. By the time you pay off the bonds, they're saying the inflation will be there, and your savings will only be 126. If there is no inflation, then you will save the $139,000 as we have reported tonight. I would turn back to the cover sheet and recommend that we sell $5,070,000. Now, your original preliminary resolution that I think came out in the packet was for Because of the way we structure it, because of the cost of issuance and things like that, now the final number is one, or $5,070,000. I believe you held your public hearing for not to exceed $5,100,000, so you are within the public hearing going forward. So I would recommend that we sell $5,070,000 to J.P. Morgan Chase Chicago for a net interest rate of 1.96 zero percent and a savings of $139,995.13 and a net present value savings of $126,393.24. It was a great savings. $140,000 is always nice to have back in the city's coffers. So I would answer any questions you may have.
What was the inflation rate you used?
It is in the calculation of probably around a 2.5 percent.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Other questions or comments?
It's all in the computer.
Yeah.
But it comes out to about 2.5.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments up here among the councilors? If not, is there any public comment? Thank you, Larry. Thanks for the long relationship the cities had with your company, too.
Thank you.
Let's vote.
Hoop? Isom?
Yes.
Lemur?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
That one carried as well, so we're on to the item H, which is ordinances. Would you read the first one, please, one able?
Ordinance to amend the city code of ordinances relating to special events and the approval process for open containers of beer and wine at special events in specified park areas, public ways, or any other city property for streeting.
Move for approval, Your Honor?
Thank you.
Second, Your Honor?
Thank you. Discussion?
This is, we talked about this on discussion, or as a report at the last meeting, and is really looking to streamline our process related to alcohol at special events by designating specific areas where that's possible, and then basically putting sort of what was a resolution requirement that was sometimes conflicting with the motion to approve an amendment to a liquor license or a new liquor license for an event, streamlining the resolution part for approval in public places to the city administrator, still leaving the city council as the ultimate authority to approve a liquor license. So giving us the ability internally to utilize our special events process to say yes to something and bringing it to the council for you guys to ultimately determine if that's what you would like to do.
Questions or comments up here?
Only question would be that we would have to update or change this ordinance every time if we're gonna add any facilities or anything else moving forward.
Yes. I can tell you, I think Jeff just took off, but I believe the Parks and Rec Advisory Board had a discussion of any facilities where, or any parks where they felt like something should be allowed, and so there was comfort with what's being recommended at this point, but it certainly would be open that if there's anything else to be added, that would be the type, we'd have to do the ordinance amendment to do it.
Other questions or comments? Anyone from the public? Roll call.
Isom?
Yes.
Lemur?
No.
Martin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Motion carried, 3-2.
Thank you. That ends our real business of the night. Now we move into the discussion items, the first one of which is a review of responses to the auction request for proposal.
Yes, so I put together a memo and I included the responses. We received two responses. One is offering their services for free with the city just paying the cost of advertising, and the second was having a, I think it was a 10 percent of, 10 percent of the sale price as their services. Ultimately, it seems like the one that is offering for free, which is Van Meter Realty or Real Estate, is the better option for us to go with. I, their proposal did talk about that they thought this would be a local-only sale. That's something where, just based on the conversations we've been having, I don't think that's necessarily going to be the case, as we've had some interests outside of our immediate area. So I think when it comes to making sure that we're advertising it or contacting the appropriate people who have expressed interest, that we can, we can work with Van Meter to make sure that happens. So if, I'd recommend that we accept the RFP from Van Meter, and then that would result in me working with the city attorney and Van Meter on an agreement, and then on December 23rd meeting, a resolution coming forward to you with a form of bid to approve, along with a reserve price that Van Meter would be recommending to you.
Other comments?
Move to approve.
I guess we, we can do that on comments.
Can we, yeah, so she has direction. Can we go ahead and direct her to sign the contract, since it won't be that, since it's free? That falls within.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's within my purchasing authority. I don't think we'll be doing more than $44,999 of advertising, so.
Do you need a motion from us?
Yeah, I would, I would like a motion directing that we accept Van Meter's bid and move forward.
Just out of curiosity, do we have an estimated idea on what advertising's gonna cost from them for previous experience?
I don't, so that's something I think we're, we're in control of the advertising budget, though, and how extensive that is.
They do a lot of it online, so.
Yeah, and I had kind of the other question, which is, gee, I wonder how much we're expecting to get in terms of what 10 percent of the sales price would be, too. Hard to know.
Mm-hmm.
But if you'd like a motion, we, we have the motion on the floor. We need a second and a vote.
I would second.
Any more discussion? Public comment? Let's vote.
Lemur?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lemur?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Motion carried, 3-2.
Thank you. That ends our real business of the night. Now we move into the discussion items, the first one of which is a review of responses to the auction request for proposal.
Yes, so I put together a memo and I included the responses. We received two responses. One is offering their services for free with the city just paying the cost of advertising, and the second was having a, I think it was a 10 percent of, 10 percent of the sale price as their services. Ultimately, it seems like the, the one that is offering for free, which is Van Meter Realty or Real Estate, is the better option for us to go with. I, their proposal did talk about that they thought this would be a local-only sale. That's something where, just based on the conversations we've been having, I don't think that's the, necessarily going to be the case, as we've had some interests outside of our immediate area. So I think when it comes to making sure that we're advertising it or contacting the appropriate people who have expressed interest, that we can, we can work with Van Meter to make sure that happens. So if, I'd recommend that we accept the RFP from Van Meter, and then that would result in me working with the city attorney and Van Meter on an agreement, and then on December 23rd meeting, a resolution coming forward to you with a form of bid to approve, along with a reserve price that Van Meter would be recommending to you.
Other comments?
Move to approve.
I guess we, we can do that on comments.
Can we, yeah, so she has direction. Can we go ahead and direct her to sign the contract, since it won't be that, since it's free? That falls within.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's within my purchasing authority. I don't think we'll be doing more than $44,999 of advertising, so.
Do you need a motion from us?
Yeah, I would, I would like a motion directing that we accept Van Meter's bid and move forward.
Just out of curiosity, do we have an estimated idea on what advertising's gonna cost from them for previous experience?
I don't, so that's something I think we're, we're in control of the advertising budget, though, and how extensive that is.
They do a lot of it online, so.
Yeah, and I had kind of the other question, which is, gee, I wonder how much we're expecting to get in terms of what 10 percent of the sales price would be, too. Hard to know.
Mm-hmm.
But if you'd like a motion, we, we have the motion on the floor. We need a second and a vote.
I would second.
Any more discussion? Public comment? Let's vote.
Lemur?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lemur?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
That one carried as well, so we're on to the item H, which is ordinances. Would you read the first one, please, one able?
Ordinance to amend the city code of ordinances relating to special events and the approval process for open containers of beer and wine at special events in specified park areas, public ways, or any other city property for streeting.
Move for approval, Your Honor?
Thank you.
Second, Your Honor?
Thank you. Discussion?
This is, we talked about this on discussion, or as a report at the last meeting, and is really looking to streamline our process related to alcohol at special events by designating specific areas where that's possible, and then basically putting sort of what was a resolution requirement that was sometimes conflicting with the motion to approve an amendment to a liquor license or a new liquor license for an event, streamlining the resolution part for approval in public places to the city administrator, still leaving the city council as the ultimate authority to approve a liquor license. So giving us the ability internally to utilize our special events process to say yes to something and bringing it to the council for you guys to ultimately determine if that's what you would like to do.
Questions or comments up here?
Only question would be that we would have to update or change this ordinance every time if we're gonna add any facilities or anything else moving forward.
Yes, I can tell you, I think Jeff just took off, but I believe the Parks and Rec
Where we stand now, I know we're targeting 60. And
Yeah.
That was pretty ambitious, I know. But where do we stand?
So, I put in the notes and recommendations to modify that to three and to change the date to March 11th of 2020. That's our deadline with FEMA for the emergency demolition program. There were three properties that we were able to acquire and get out to bid. We have some others that are in the works that are ultimately not gonna hit that deadline. And any extension we continue to do of that deadline continues to hold up our management costs and other projects. And when Michelle and I, when we looked at, you know, the bids that we'd received on the three projects that we had compared to some of the other ones that we had with the prior bid that we'd done of nine structures, these bids were significantly higher and they should have been because FEMA was requiring us to break out things that were non-eligible things. And so, I think, you know, what, what remaining demolition there would be to do should just be coming under our D and D program and that the, the time that it takes to try and complete something under the FEMA program and the cost that it has, too, is just, it's not worth the few that we do have remaining that we're going to be acquiring. But I would say that there's still going to be in, in 2020, we're, we're going to be, hopefully in early 2020, we'll, we'll have upwards of another three to five that we'll be able to acquire pretty quickly through some tax deeds. And we'll be able to start processes for moving forward on, on these.
Other questions or comments?
I guess we can talk about it more at the strategic planning thing. But as I look, look at some of this, too, I just, some are kind of vague. So, as we as a council and everybody else sits down from the city staff, I think an additional column that's kind of beneficial is what the deliverable is. Not just a, you know, some of our open for interpretation and I like, I don't know. When I'm setting goals, having an actual tied deliverable to a goal allows you to, in my opinion, at least, better measure some of these ones that are a little bit more vague and open-ended, so.
Yeah, and the thing that we don't have here and I will have ready for the 18th is with each of these goals, we, we set out what would be key indicators of how we're doing. And so, Michelle and I have been working quite heavily on the housing side of things this year just to get some data in a form where we can even present it. And that's a lot of what we have. We have data, but it's not being collected in a way where we can easily just pull it and say, oh, this is the change from year one to year two or anything. So, there's a lot of work that we're having to do right now just to get things into a format that we can even talk about. But those kind of key indicators are things that I'd like to start paying more attention to as we move forward into coming years. But, but yes, we'll definitely have an opportunity on the 18th to, you know, this is, this is just, I would say, staff's list of things that we think are important that still need to be continued. And ultimately, we'll be adding to that as well that day and can make any amendments and changes for more specificity and deliverables on things.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions or public comment? Okay. That is the end of our items of discussion and that takes us to the public comment session. We do have two closed sessions tonight after we're done with public comment. The microphone is open. And seeing no one approaching it, let's vote to go into closed session. Is there a motion to do that?
I move that we go into closed session.
And that's pursuant to?
Would you like me to read that?
We're gonna do L first.
Oh, L first.
Do I have a second? Would you like me to read it, Your Honor?
Yes.
I think we need to read the reason for the closed session.
Yes. Closed session pursuant to 215, subsection 1, paragraph J of the Code of Iowa to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment, hiring, performance, or discharge